I'd like to welcome into the town of panel select board meeting. August twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Board member roll call.
Angie Rowling.
Bob Jarvis.
Brian Harris.
Jamie Percy.
Mike Gardner. Like everyone rise please and. Fugitive agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doesn't take much to make these chairs roll away, that's for sure.
Approval of the agenda, public comment, approval of minutes of August third, August tenth, August fifteenth. The warrants, we don't have any correspondence, we don't have any access permits. Updates from town officials, transfer station year end reports, we have Tom Shewie with us tonight. The animal control ordinance, executive for personnel, executive for legal. Which were adding after personnel, please. Zoning officer job posting, health officer job posting, public comment and adjournment.
So moved with the change.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. I'd like to open up public counter. Okay, approval of minutes, August third, two thousand twenty-three, special sewer commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me, um, any discussion? Comments, all those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike abstaining. Minutes of August tenth, two thousand twenty-three, select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. Minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, special select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections?
Yes, um, it said that I opened the meeting, that would be incorrect, Mike opened the meeting.
Oh, I forgot the change from the last session meeting.
That's okay.
Any other corrections?
Nope.
I missed that, Angie, thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor with the correction?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. Warrants, accounts payable, August eighteenth, eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Uh, any questions?
I just have a quick question on the, um. Tax credits, that is from the state for the, um. Overage of the homestead, correct? I just want people, I just want to make people realize that it wasn't something that happened in this office, it's from the state.
Yeah, a lot of times it comes from like an, um, overpayment.
Right, and that money goes back to them, it's not held over for the shears taxes, correct? Cause I was questioned by two different people and I just want to make sure that that's clear. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, any corrections? All those in favor of the August eighteenth, um, accounts payable?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. Accounts payable, August twenty-fifth, forty-six thousand four hundred and five dollars and thirty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. Payroll, August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. Payroll, August twenty-fifth, ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. Okay, updates from town officials. You know anything?
I don't, this time.
Great, just leaving it up to me. Zoning permits, we had a couple of, um, public hearings for some different things, I think that's next week, no, following week, right, you know? Six, September sixth, I think, right? Health officer, um. Get an inspection tomorrow. Uh, get another one to do probably next week. Rental properties, but I'm being requested by the owner of the property. I guess this is probably a health officer, um, related. Report, the water system, uh, that panel states is slated to start on the twenty. Twenty-eighth, I believe. Um, let me just double check that date, I don't want to be wrong. Yes, Monday the twenty-eighth, they're slated to, um. Start the construction on the water system in the, in the mobile home park at panel states. I've been in contact with the project manager who is out of King, New Hampshire. I've been in contact with, um, the girl who.
Bless you. Thank you.
Who is the park manager from, I think she's out of Louisiana. I've been contacting both of them all week, so they're, they're set and ready to go. Their, their equipment's there. So, um, they didn't really have a timeline, um. They gave me the breakdown how we're gonna do it, but it's, they don't, don't have a timeline really, I mean, they're thinking, you know? Obviously as quick as they can, but.
Hey, if they step in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, they're gonna start Monday, they're slated to start there Monday morning, so. It's about it for me.
Nothing outstanding. As far as any other requests or anything?
Flunked from.
It, I didn't know, cause I know for a while you said you were backed up a little bit on. Different things.
No, we got caught up, the.
Cause you were asking for people to put either an email or, uh, leave voicemail.
Oh, from the town, from the health officer?
For that or anything for zoning, so.
Health officer, health officer, we're, you know, I'm, I'm in good shape with that, I got a couple of inspections to do. Like I said, been in contact with the people running the water, doing the water system down, down there in panel. Yeah, trash complaint in the box, the written complaint that I need to go in and inspect. Um, trash ordinance. Um. Zoning, no, we're, I think we're in good shape with that right now, I've been answering a lot of questions on zoning, um, from, from various people. A lot of phone calls, um. But nothing, nothing crazy, it's, you know, people wanna start a home-based business, they wanna, um. You know, the proper procedure, what they need to do, or you know, do I need a permit for my shed? My shed is, you know, X by X, do I need a permit, just nothing crazy, overall, day-to-day things anyway. For zoning, we got caught up a little bit for now. It'll, it'll, I think it'll stay that way for a little bit, usually does this time of year. Transfer station year-end report, come on, Tom.
I'm gonna read my stuff, I've had duties on. These light chairs are big boy. They just go all over the place. Alright, uh, what we have here, if you look at the, the paper I just handed you, uh, the. This is what, by the tonnage of what we have done, you know, for the year. So what we've had here, the landfill tonnage, which is basically the trash and the construction, okay? It ends up to being two hundred and sixty-four point eight-four tons, and that's landfill. The amount of the co-mingle, the paper, the lead acid batteries, scrap metal, other batteries, compost and tires. Is a hundred and forty point two eight, uh, tons that we've recycled, so we are not. We're just sitting right there, the same percentage, all, it's, it's been there ever since I've, I've started. We've, we've increased it a little bit with, with what we've done with the compost, we started that a year earlier than was required, but, um. That's helped us, but we're just stuck. You, you, we're trying to get the people to do more recycling and it's just not, it's not working, I think that if you look across the state, you're gonna find the same thing. And, uh, so that, that's the one thing that bothers me a little bit. Now, we do have the new, uh, household hazardous waste facility in Bennington. And, uh, actually they came out yesterday with a beautiful big metal sign, I've gotta put down on the tipping shed probably tomorrow. I find a place to mount it, it has all the information for people to contact the solid waste alliance. And, and the way you do it, you get in online or you can actually call and you have to set up appointments, only open on Mondays. And it's gonna run now to probably close the end of October because we got such a late start this year. There's a lot of permitting, you know, uh, that they, they had problems with. So what we're doing is, it's working out marvelously well, I mean, people are coming in, you get a fifteen-minute time slot and you're boom, you, you know you're gonna be here at a specific time. And they go, so that, that's, the, the alliance has done really quite well with this. And we just have to see, you know, we're not gonna get a, a real feel for what it's gonna be able to do in the total cost until next year because it's such a late start. But it's, uh, it's been quite successful, alright? And then what we have here is, this is a comparison from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. On all the departments, you know, the difference in trash, and you can see that, you know, we're, uh. You know, about eleven thousand dollars over. And last year's permit sales, we ended up with five hundred and fif- five hundred and seventeen, which, uh, really. Yeah, I was, I was thrilled, I was hoping to get five hundred, we've never hit five hundred before. But we hit that and, and right now, I have this thing down here, the permit sales, same amount of days from the first of July. There's only four difference, three hundred and sixty-two to three hundred and fifty-eight, we're behind four, four permits. So I thought that was pretty good, but the permits for last year were five seventeen, I certainly hope we can hit that, my goal is at least five hundred. We've had a lot of new people come in, uh, we, I mean, a tremendous amount, we've got some people who are coming back. You know, and they, they really, they really rely on us and, uh, and then the other thing I have down here. Is the difference from last July, cause that's the only full month I have from last year and, and this July. You know, and we have a two thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars increase, even though we, we have lower amount of permits. So we've really caught up on the permits this month, so it's gonna, it's gonna really, you know, increase. So I think that what we did with the increase, you know, and everything is really, really working, really worthwhile. But, uh, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm, I'm pretty happy with these numbers, we're quite honest, you know, we're really coming along, we've been picking things up, you know, and, uh. And then we got, of course, we have, you know. Uh, Leonard's stuff down there and everything, and he got the, the new shed in, I, he didn't have to take off work, I had the guy do it down there. Leonard's got it painted, it looks great, I mean, the, the whole, the whole thing is looking really good.
Yeah.
You know, the whole place is, you know, except for a couple of things like the oil, the old oil shed, it's not looking too good, I gotta. Guess, you know, something done with that and I've gotta do something with the roof on the, uh, on the office. Uh, I'm gonna change the whole roof, I don't want a hip roof because water's coming off and runs right down into the cars and, you know, it's raining, they're trying to, trying to do a transaction, it's not a good thing. And I like to put gable end on that, and then I need to get some repairs on some of the, uh. Micro lamps and stuff we have down there and some of the truss, the, uh, some of the cord, cords on the trusses have been broken, you know? By backhoe and stuff over the year, we gotta get that, some of that stuff, so I need to, I'm gonna have to try to get a, uh, you know, a request for. You know, proposals on this, uh, have them come down, take a look at it. And I, if we can get some people to, to look at this and, and do some things, cause I'd really like to get it repaired, some of the stuff. You know, we've been able to hold everything, you know, I think the, the structure's fine, but I wanna get it, you know, all picked up, but it's, it's tough to work over the dumpsters. You know, I've, I've done that for a long time and I wouldn't want to do it, of course, I worked over, I worked over french fryers, so, you know, the. Doing potato chips, they were running, they wouldn't stop, so, they ran twenty-four seven, but, uh. But this, this is, I think, I think that we're really going in the right direction, you know, everything's been going pretty well. Uh, I'm planning on in February having a knee replacement, so I'll be off for a few weeks and I've talked to. To Stan and he's gonna fill in and so forth, so we should be, we should be okay, and in two weeks I've got to have my other eye. Cataract surgery, so he's gonna fill in that day too, so we're, we're doing pretty well as far as filling in, you know? I mean, it's, it's a little hairy with just the two people, but it's, it's, it's working out pretty well.
Good.
You know, everything's going well, so we're, we're down, when I started, we had four employees, so we're down to two. You know, what can I say, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to cut as much as we can. You know, really, so, any questions for anybody?
Can you get us, um. Before your building's getting too much of a disrepair, will you get a, um, work on getting us an estimate in the next month to follow up on the repairs that you gotta have?
Yeah, I can write it, I can write up repairs, yeah, that's not, that's not a problem, but it's like I said, the.
Well, they need to be taken care of, let's, let's get an estimate, let's get them taken care of.
Yeah.
And, um, before we're, you know, replacing the roof because we didn't put cords in.
Well, we, you know, the roof's gotten hit a couple of times, but, but some people come in at box trucks, pull right in, boom, you know, the overhang. I'm gonna eliminate that overhang on that side, you know, and they can hit the jersey barrier before they're gonna hit that, you know, that's what we wanna do. Yeah, I'll, I'll write it up, you know, basically what I'd like to do to get some of this stuff done right now. And, uh, next year I'd really like to get more money put into fund to, uh, to, to work on the paving down back, because those trucks are having an awful time down there. Yeah, we've put, we've been putting sand down there, putting sand down there for all these years, and then, you know, when it, when it goes bad, when it gets mud season. You know, we end up pulling trucks out and stuff, we don't wanna have the trucks come in when we're not there, cause we got the backhoe at least to pull them out, you know? And if they really can't do that, then maybe, you know, we could call Joel and say, if somebody bring a loader over or something. But, uh, you know, it's, it's such a mess, they just, everything's sinking right in there, so we really, we really need to get that at some point in time. And we get rid of a lot of the erosion going down and the road going down to the back too. So we'd like to get, get that fixed up. Uh, there's one other thing on the electronics. They're charging us, uh, three hundred and twenty dollars, I think, three hundred and twenty dollars a ton for the non-covered, and we're only getting a hundred and sixty dollars for the covered. And the problem is now we're getting all the new TVs, which are much lighter than the older ones. Every now and then we get one of those great big bruisers, but you know, you know, we still get, so we're getting an imbalance there, but we're still keeping everything, you know, off the roads and so forth. Or trying to, you, you would think that people would know that, you know, the electronics, you know, are free except the, the non-covered. And we, we take them from anybody, you don't have to have a permit to do that, you don't have a permit, you don't need a permit to come in with, with, uh, for us involved, either state-run programs. And the batteries also, same thing. And now the lead acid batteries, when I started, we were getting twenty-five cents a pound, I had to take them over to Walooza because Atkins closed up, you know, and, uh. We're down to ten cents a pound now.
Ow.
But, I mean, it's.
Nothing.
Yeah, you gotta, you can't have him putting sulfuric acid a lot all over the place, you know, so, you know, you gotta, you gotta be careful with that. So, I mean, it's, it's just a few things that, you know, we just, we tape it, you know, people don't realize, but we're, we're taking all your batteries except for if you come in there, one guy tried to come in with all these. Electric car batteries, you know, these big lithium ions.
Yeah.
And, uh, I was talking to a really good friend of mine's daughter and she just, she just got her master's degree from Dartmouth and, uh. At environmental engineering, I said, what are they gonna do with them, and she looked like, they don't know.
Right.
I mean, this, this, we've got a, an Ivy League education, she's, they, they just don't know what they're gonna do with them. So, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a problem coming and I don't know what's gonna happen with it.
It's like old solar panels, when they start tipping over, they're wrecked.
Yeah.
They had the life. They're gonna have, need a place for those, and we don't, they don't know what they're gonna do with them yet.
Yeah, exactly, so I mean, those, those are two things that, you know, down the future. You know, we're, we're looking at, and you know, these are, these are some prob- these are some real problems. I mean, this is something that we really have to, uh. Really have to be addressed at some point in time, but I called the people that called to recycle about these batteries, I said. Oh, we could take some of those bigger ones, but you know, it costs me a hundred dollars for the box to ship it. So we're not doing that, you know, if we do, we charge them a hundred and fifty, but you know, if it's over four hundred amp hour lithium ion. You know, we can't ship it.
That's true.
You know, well, my, my thing is, I think that some of the state perhaps should, should do this, or federal government, is to have a program. That the, the manufacturers play, just like they do for the batteries, just like they do for the fluorescents, just like they do for the, the TVs and stuff. They should have a program to do that, you know, and I think that these, these are some solutions, their solutions are out there, but, you know, we need to have some people working on them. You know, I'm, I'm certainly not, they're not gonna listen to some guy that runs a transfer station panel.
We're having a pretty great time.
Yeah.
Way above it, I'll tell you right now, Mike.
So if you want to, I don't know the rest of the board feels, but I've, if you wanna have, um. Some paving done, um, can you get us some sort of an estimate? Um, before we start budgeting?
For next year?
Yeah, for.
Oh, definitely.
Fiscal year, get with Joel.
Yeah.
And, and figure out what we need to do, cause I think we're gonna have to get in there and dig out, I talked to Joel a little bit about this, I think we gotta get in and dig out. The muck that's there and put a basin and some fabric and put a base and then, and then go ahead. So if you would give that to us, try to get that to us before, I mean, I know it's hard to give us a number on the black top because that, like, fluctuates, but. We can get a ballpark idea on, on how to budget for that, so we're not hitting with it all at once.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna, I, I've been trying to do.
Right, no, I understand.
A year, but I think, I think that now, with the, with the cost of oil and the way things are going and the inflation rate, I mean, you got ten thousand a year, I'm, I'm not even making up, you know, the difference.
Right, I just, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna, you know, next June or May or something say, hey, we don't wanna wake up, this is what it's gonna cost, if we can budget ahead of time.
Well, I think, I think, I think that, well, Joel and I will definitely get, get to that before we get to budget.
Okay, alright.
Definitely do that, and I do, I do appreciate that because this, it is a real, it is a real problem we have here, you know?
Ask Joel if it's possible, you always ask for the whole, but the best route as far as doing it in phases, if we have to do it over a couple of years.
Well, I, you know, we really could go in there, uh, and get that, like, the gunk, cause that's basically what we have.
Do the base one year.
You know, we don't have to haul it out or anything, you know, we just need to get a dozer in there and get the stuff moved out.
Right, but just, you know, just so we can budget, that's all.
Yeah, well, I'll get with them, we, we have a, we have a little bit of it, but now maybe we'll just update it, so.
If we, if we can have two different things as far as phases, it gives us more options.
Yeah, well, it'd be a lot nicer for Leonard when he gets to come in there at night with those dogs and stuff that he has there, you know, and that's been, that's been a rather successful, uh, thing here, we did, I, I'm really, really happy with it. I'm happy with Leonard and the way they run that and Kate comes in.
Leonard mentioned about coyotes there that one night.
Oh, boy, didn't he?
Phone access.
Well, we, we, we've been discussing that.
I have to call the company and get a, see if I can get another box.
I don't, I don't think Leonard's coming, can I, but we can move into the animal control ordinance, everybody know me, Tom?
Yeah.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you, Tom.
Alright, thank you, Tom.
You're quite welcome, then everybody have a nice evening now.
You too.
Thank you. Well, hey, the first one went well, so first one I took three days off, this I'm only taking one because I, I thought, where am I, where do I go and sit home, you know? I should have been working. Okay, thanks, man.
Thank you so much.
Okay, animal control officer. Ordinance, sorry.
So, um, I believe I sent you all the draft that Bob worked on over the last couple of weeks. And I think we're at the point now where just you guys need to discuss the fines.
I did some research and I looked at Bennington, I looked at Shasberry, I looked at New York and I looked at Maine. And they don't seem to have, um, different. Amount fines for everything, it's one set.
One set, okay.
So like, um, a hundred dollars first offense, second offense, two hundred dollars, third offense, three hundred dollars, and consecutively after that. And they don't, none of them that I looked at had any waivers.
Okay.
Um, Maine was two hundred and fifty dollars, just for not picking up. After your pat, it started right there, two hundred and fifty dollars and went up to eight hundred. New York started off at three hundred and went to a thousand, Shasberry, its first offense is thirty-five, second offense is seventy-five and third offense is a hundred and fifty. So that's what I found across, looking online at everything was that they started off. And just had the same amount for everything, I don't know if that's something that you guys.
We, I, I know that we did, you, I can give you some background on ours, um, so, uh, the, our current ordinance has just one, and I thought I heard from, uh. Uh, uh, from Leonard in our last meeting that that was one of the sore points, right? It was all the same, uh, you know, picking up after your, you're picking up poop. Or not picking up poop is the same as your dog biting somebody, so, uh, or a, a dog running loose, and he wanted different fines. The, the model ordinance from the B L C T does break it out into different offenses. We don't have to do that, we can go back to what we were doing and just say any offense is, is X, Y and Z for first offense, second offense and third offense. Um, I, it's entirely up to the board, I mean, I'm just letting you know what the, uh, you know, that our current one doesn't break it out. Though the model ordinance from the B L T C does break it out by different offenses. Um, and that's why it's that way in disordnance, um, but, um, again, I'm, I'm happy with whatever the board decides to do, whether you wanna break it out or, or make it all one.
So Bennington, um. Recovery fee is in lieu of civil penalty, the Bennington waiver for municipal complaints, the first offense is thirty-five, the second offense was fifty, the third offense was a hundred, the fourth was one fifty. And the fifth was three hundred, then offenses shall be counted on a calendar year basis, which I think is something that we should make sure that we have in it, you know, cause he did ask because of multiple.
I think that's what he's been doing too.
Then it should be a calendar year, and then Bennington says civil penalty for ordinance violations, first offense was seventy-five, second was a hundred, third was two hundred. Um, fourth was three hundred and fifth was five hundred. So it's all over the board.
So that, uh, um, I, I think we ought not to change, my, my personal opinion is we shouldn't be, I, I would increase it because the one that we currently have. Has been there since two thousand and five, so it's probably due for some updating, but I wouldn't suddenly go from, you know, small fines to astronomical fines. That would seem like too big of a change all at once and, uh, probably more than we need to do. Um, I did also wanna point out that the, they did have a waiver fee, we could, we could, that was in the model ordinance as well. Um, shoot, there was another point I was gonna make and I forgot what it was, but I'll think of it later.
What's your point? I, my, my opinion is to, um, get rid of the waiver fee.
Yeah, I agree, because that just gives somebody.
Just give somebody an opportunity.
It also makes.
I remember that, I think it's in the ordinance, I remember what I was gonna say, that, uh, it's also important and it's in the ordinance that the. The fines, uh, the one year and all that is not against the animal, it's against the owner.
Correct.
Have two dogs and dog one does something today and dog two does something tomorrow, that's two offenses, not one.
Correct.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I agree of getting, giving, getting rid of the waivers. Cause that just gets. Because that just gives somebody.
I I think, to make, to make things streamlined, I also believe that your offenses should be whatever, it's first offense is X number of dollars, second offense is X number of dollars, no matter what the offense is, because if we have a dog bite situation, we now have, um, educated, you've been educated, or educated ourselves on the vicious dog.
Yes.
Ordinate, or, you know, what we need to do for that. So if if there is a dog bite, and it's a persistent dog bite situation, you know, I mean, every dog has a chance to bite somebody once, right? I mean, let's face it, but if you have a dog who is multiple reports biting or killing or whatever, then then we have a avenue for that as well. So keep things simple. My, my, and I, I don't, the amounts are totally all over the place, like you said, but um, keep it simple. It's, it's, you know, you have, you have one, you know, first offense is X dollars, two is X number of dollars, and so on and so forth.
That's what all of the ones that I've read seem to have.
Well, I think that's
I think
It's much easier probably to keep track of, too.
Yes.
My, now, I think our first adventure now is a twenty-five bucks, right?
I think so.
Shastberry is thirty-five. Um, Bennington is thirty-five, unless it's a civil penalty for ordinance violation, and it goes to seventy-five. We're twenty-five?
Right.
I would be happy with thirty-five or forty dollars for the first offense.
I think we also need to, and I, I, I like that Leonard was giving verbal warnings also. I think we just, we probably don't need that in the ordinance. Just leave it up to his judgment as to whether or not uh, he's gonna give a warning or or write a ticket.
His discretion. I mean, I feel strongly supporting him that way.
Yeah, yeah, but as soon as he writes that first ticket, then any subsequent offense is another ticket and another offense, and it starts going up the line. But, yeah, I I trust his judgment on 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 the warnings.
So first offense, thirty-five?
I'm thinking thirty-five.
I think thirty-five.
Twenty-five now.
Second offense. Um, Bennington is fifty.
I, my feeling is
Shastberry was seventy-five.
My feeling is double it. First offense thirty-five, second offense seventy bucks, third offense one forty.
Yeah.
Just keep doubling it. Keep doubling it. It's easy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It means that's after twelve months, right?
Right.
Right.
It's easy, yeah. I agree with that. We we need people to, once they start getting tickets, they need to correct behavior.
And that could be easy language to state.
Exactly.
After each offense, it's doubled.
Right.
From previous.
And there's no, that gives you, doesn't give you a cutoff, really.
Right.
You know, you know, fifth offense is five hundred and well, sixth offense is five hundred and oh, six.
Go to what, eight?
Eight hundred.
Yeah, there is a maximum.
There is a maximum.
It's easy to, it's easy to write in the ordinance.
That's right, you just put in there, I'll clean.
Just, you know, it it keeps it clean.
Exactly. Fairly easy to understand. Somebody ought to be able to understand that it doubles every, every offense doubles. And like Bob said, if someone has three dogs, it's not, it's not per dog, it's per, per violation, per person.
Okay, that sounds good. So I'll make those changes and then bring it back, and hopefully, at that point, you guys will be able to um, adopt it, and we have the sixty-day waiting period, and then it will be effective if we don't have any petitions.
That was our only thing up on the ordinance, correct?
Yep.
We almost called you last week, Bob, to come on the cattle roundup with with us, Leonard and I. We were gonna give you a call. I think last week, I forgot what it was. We, we gotta call.
As a neighbor, I'm I'm perfectly willing to help somebody with cattle.
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not an official function of the town.
Yeah, no, I know. That was, that was a little bit of an adventure. We go down to animal control, we go to that.
I think so, yeah.
Perfect. Um, I want to entertain a motion to enter into executive for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bye-bye, sorry.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bye-bye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. I'll entertain a motion to enter executive for legal.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bye-bye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. A motion to come out of executive for legal.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob?
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. On the executive for legal, we are going to refer to uh, the situation to the town attorney, Bob Fisher. And it is in reference to the, um, mobile home that we acquired via tax sale, I believe, was last June. Um, there's a situation, so we're gonna, we're gonna, um, send it to our attorney for legal consultation. Okay, zoning officer job posting.
So basically, we, you all received this through email, and it's a a new posting for the job, for the zoning administrator to be posted in the banner. This because we do this every three years. We repost it and see who we get for applicants. They will go to the planning commission first, and then, um, they will recommend somebody to you all to appoint. Did you approve of the zoning administrator job posting?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bye-bye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Health officer job posting.
Same thing with that. I sent it all to you. It's the monthly stipend of three hundred. Um, this position has not been filled for a while. Mike's been kind of covering all the duties, so we'll get this posted as soon as possible.
So moved.
Second.
Um, the health officer position, just so everyone is clear, um, that is a position that is recommended to the state by the select board, and the health officer is, um, appointed by the state of Vermont, not not the town or the select board. It's just a recommendation from the town, from the select board. The select board is the board of health, though, for the town. And a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bye-bye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye.
We need one more word about that. I just want to make it clear to everybody that, uh, according to incompatible and compatible positions, those are not incompatible, so the same person can hold both of those positions. And just so anybody listening tonight, if you're interested in zoning administrator and you're interested in health officer, there is a, an opportunity to do both.
That's correct. And the reason that I'm doing the health officer position um, is because it falls, if there is no health officer in the town, then it falls under the chairperson of the select board. Not something I want to be doing. Something I'm gonna have to. Okay, uh, public comment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bye-bye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Thank you, everyone.
I was on top of the adjourn.
Have a good night, Bob.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.